Hello, wherever you are tuning in from. This is the Investors Corner with me, Jack Steven Good. And this is where we explore hidden treasures. And today in this episode, I'm glad to be joined by none other than His Worship, Michael Lado Thomas Alajabu, the Mayor of Juba City Council. Your Worship, thank you very much for giving us your time and sitting with SSBC to explore developmental issues in Juba City Council.
Thank you very much for this particular opportunity that you have given to me this particular time. And my welcome to you for my office. And also appealing to my people of Juba City to be attentive towards this particular stage.
Yes, in this edition, we are going to focus mainly on developmental activities in regards to Juba City Council. The activities that your office is doing to ensure that there is a proper development and prosperity in the general economic sector of the country. But perhaps we'll take it one step at a go. Or maybe we'd like to take you back a little bit. Because you have been brought into this office not too long ago. Perhaps we would like to refresh the minds of our viewers to know about your development agenda, your plan of action in taking up this office and your new position of Mayor of Juba City Council. What is your plan of development through this office?
Well, I have a number of priorities which I put as my statement plan for my period to be the Mayor of Juba City Council. And I have a list of it here, almost 20 points. I hope that we will have enough time in order to share this together so that our people, our viewers are able to know exactly what we're going to do in this particular period of my being the Mayor of Juba City Council. Based on the vision and then the mission of Juba City Council and overall objectives. I drive out my priorities weeks lays as follows. The first place and under the motto of Juba City Council, which is keep Juba clean, green and beautiful. And myself also, I gave myself a motto or a theme at the time where I am the Mayor. That I am the Mayor of Service Delivery and Urban Development. So based on this, I structured 20 points that I want to pursue at this particular time in order to cover the service delivery to our people and then also to help urban development. Number one, to improve the administrative and management system in Juba City Council and revenue collection system by digitalized system. And then number two is to stop or minimize the rate of corruption and misuse of funds in Juba City Council. Number three, harmonize prices in the market by reviewing the red shadow and stop unnecessary violence. Number four, build a stronger relationship between the city council, authorities and traders of business people to create conducive environment for investors. Number five, to improve security in Juba City Council collectively with the state and national government for the welfare of the people of South Sudan and capital Juba. Number six, provision of basic service delivery to the people of Juba in provision of clean water education service, health and public health provision, opening of internal roads and its improvement, opening of spaces for recreational activities as well as promoting sport activities for the young one. Number eight, reorganization of transport system and bus parks as well the introduction of parking slots in public areas. Number nine, introduce taxi project in the city with reflected colors so as to reduce high rate of death and injury cost by the Toronto, the border border riders, behaviors as well as the niggas. Number 10, to have foreign exchange visit with the clinical staff in order to learn other experiences from outside. Number 11, completion of organization and the demarcation of roads and showing in the areas which are still under demarcation like Haigem, Haimegiki, Haipolo, Haigawat and so forth. Because most of our people, they have the demarcation of the land, but showing is not being done, so they will not be able to develop the land. And my theme was including the urban development. Number 12, completion of maintenance and number so that it helps us in description and also for service delivery, especially for the security. Number 13, promote youth and women activities as well as gender related issues. Number 14, maintenance of law and order and stop or minimize criminal acts including niggas or outlaw practices. Number 15, reorganization of the markets of Juba. And then number 16, establish organs and street boys centers with irrelevant authorities. Number 17, introduce digitalized system for registration of plots in cooperation with the State Minister of Law and Physical Infrastructure in order to combat the plot driving in the city. Number 18, promote peace, reconciliation and peaceful coexistence among the various communities of South Sudan and foreign communities living in the city of Juba. Number 19, consult and involve communities of people in decision making relating to the developmental activities in their areas and make them aware of any activities taking place in their areas so that they feel they are part of it. And then finally, promote programs of people with disabilities. This is my comprehensive priority plan to be implemented at the time that I'm in this office.
Good, and going through your plan of action that you just read to us, there are key points that we would like to touch on so that you can clarify to our public and to our viewers in general. Perhaps maybe we can start on the issue of revenue collection that was highlighted and the key points that you just mentioned. In terms of revenue, the voices on the streets right now in Juba is that although city council is working in as much as possible to improve business and create a conducive environment, the rate of revenue collection, the taxation that is being imposed and introduced by city council is beyond understandable by many business people in the city. Any justification as to why city council has so, of late, at least recently, decided to hike the rate of revenue collection through taxes to unimaginable rate? And what is expected from this point?
Well, as I mentioned in one of my points here, as priorities to my plan, I mentioned something concerning minimization of prices and harmonization of relationship between city council authorities and then the traders and investors. That is to say, I have a plan in order to reduce all what we have been doing and especially in the former authorities. But I want to make you also know that those rates that have been levied on the traders, this is being accounted by local government act 2009. We do not bring any rates from outside. That is what is within our jurisdiction and mandate of Juba City Council to collect these necessary rates. The issue in the markets mostly, they talk of the city council. They talk of the city council. Because city council is one of the institutions very close to the people. And we are the one very close to the traders, to the investors because we are the entity that provides service to the people and we are so close always with them. Collection of garbage, even in the hotels and in the companies, it's we who are doing cleaning of the roads, provision of water and all this, we are the one regulating, including the opening of roads for access and movement of people, the traffic, the security and any other services which is required. So I want to tell you that it is not the city council who is alone in the market collecting money. Though I've not been mentioning who are those other institutions we are, but there are other institutions. But what is known at our site is because we go with uniform. And then always we tell them that we are city council. And then we have also our logo here, as you can see this. When they ever say that, they know that this is a city council. And when we go in plain uniform, they felt that maybe it is our stuff. Because we collect rates which is being mandated for us by local government act. And then also revenue authorities of the two governments, the national and even the state.
Perhaps, sorry to cut you, perhaps that is one key point that people would like to be clarified. When you talk about revenue collection in Juba City, Juba City Council, it is, as you mentioned, a host to a number of governments. It being a local government in itself, there is the state government and there is the national government. And in terms of revenue collections, we have also national institutions that are tasked with revenue collections, like the National Revenue Authority, the State Revenue Authority and now the city council. How is these three institutions able to harmonize the collection of revenues and taxation process to avoid this collision that you just mentioned?
Well, city council has their own rates which is established by local government act 2009. And this is what always we stick on it. And then also the NRA, be it national or state, they are also having their labors. But the issue is sometimes we go to the market in the same time with them. And then this makes it so difficult for the traders and investors in the markets seeing as though they have been attacked.
The question is, has there been, the question is, sorry, has there been an attempt to harmonize these three institutions to go as one team instead of each institution going on itself?
Well, but that will not be possible because we have our own red shadow. And we have a time whereby we go to the market and especially the alliances. When you go for alliances, we divide it into quarters. So the time when we plan to visit the market for such kind of collections of rates, it will not coincide with the state and it will not coincide with the national. That is why I was sticking that we have our own policy, we have our own regulated laws and regulations that we use too. So it is difficult for us in order to come together. But it is clear that the rates we have is different from the rates the national government and then the state have. And even people like the institution like the fire brigade, they go to the market also to collect money. The money they collect according to them is for them to support whenever there any fire arise in the market so that they are able to do. There are a number of entities which is not less than eight. Sometimes traders saying they are almost 12 different entities that are collecting money from them, but they are not necessarily city council. We have only a specific number of rates that we collect from traders, but not that all of these rates collected is collected by city council.
Yes, your worship, recently there has been a local order from Juba City Council that has been circulated on local media and social media, which talks about temporary suspension of operation of discos, DJs, church related trans nights fellowship in Juba. What is the justification for this local order to ban, for example, for those who would criticize banning of church related activities considering the constitutional right for freedom of worship?
Well, these orders come after thorough analysis and monitoring and evaluation of what is happening within the city. As you know, I came here two months back. And when I came in, people say like I'm sleeping or I'm not knowing things, but I was studying interior setup. So that is a time that I learned that and I have an investigation of information within the areas from different communities, from different perception of people, including the community policing that we have initiated in the areas. We collect information from different areas. We found that the discourse places, the DJs and then those church fellowships, which is always overnighting at night, they are places that encourage and that attract those niggas, niggas and then toronters of different kind. So that comes after the studies. And we laid that study with other stakeholders like the national securities, the police, the CIDs, the counterintelligence and all that. So we together, we come and decide that something must be done. And the level of government that can address and regulate that is the city council. So I decided that after the studies and even we share some bodies like UN bodies whereby we have to look into rights of people of different kinds. We found that the generation of the niggas in general, it comes out from these groups and it continues to develop from time to time. And those bodies, for you people to know and our public, we have almost 10 groups which is developing now and growing inside the city with a criminal mentality. One, Kajang Talent Group of Niggas. BSBs, Black Street Boys, that is number two. Number three is Mob Gang. It means it is the leading, most notorious and violent group based in Juba. Number four, Black Warrior. Number five, Hippo Raiders. Number six, Top Talent Group. Number seven, BTS. Number eight, D Black. Number nine, TM Group. And then number 10, Toronto. Some people feel that Toronto is not part of Niggas, but they are part of Niggas, they just divided into that. So those places like DJs places, this is a place where always they collide. They go to dance, they drink, they dance badly, they do a number of criminals that cannot be stated here to public, things that are really illicit.
Well, your worship, we are conveying the voices of the public. Perhaps some of them would be of interest to your office. We understand that these are vices and negative activities that are hampering the development of any society. And the community understands that the initiative your office is taking is to curtail these activities and to bring them to an end. But considering the fact that Juba City Council, just like any other city in the world, is thriving in a developing city. These are activities that comes, what many people would say, comes with any type of developing city. And as you mentioned in your order, that this is a temporary suspension operation. It basically means that it is a short term plan. Then what could be the long term plan to completely stop these activities? Bearing in mind that most of these negative activities that are rising among these groups which are composed of young people is as a result of lack of maybe recreative facilities or encouragement to pursue different activities to get their heads out of these activities. What would be the long term plan to curtail this?
Well, we have a security plan that will not be able to disclose to everybody here in order to curb and combat the practices. But all in all, we came together, we come together as stakeholders. The SSPS, our police, the city council and then the international organizations including UNICEF, Save the Children, Norway and UK, UNDP, Eonomis and JICA. We seated in several meetings in order to see how we can educate this situation. So we have a good plan that we have come up with. And even we propose what is to be done, especially in the case of juvenile delinquencies. Because you know, the niggas are not all mature. Some of them are even 13 years, 12 years. So we felt that something must be done. And we tried even to see that how we improve our reformatories. We have two reformatories only in Juba. One that is just annexed to national prison and then one is in Lolo Goto. And then we have one in WA. Those are the three only reformatories we have. So we are trying to see how we improve those particular facilities with those organizations I have mentioned. Making sure that anything that we are doing now is well studied and well analyzed. And that is why I was saying that something must be done. And even we look into it that we have to see what is our transitional consensus talking about certain particular activities which is being conducted by our young one. The penal court 2008, what is it talking about? The Child Act 2008, the Criminal Procedures Act 2008, Prison Act 2011 and Regulation 2016. Juba City Council Vios 2013 Amendment. And any regional international convention and treaties. These are areas that of concern that we went through them one by one and then see how we can deal with such situation. And that is why we felt that one of the solution would be the revival of vocational training centers within the cities of South Sudan, not only Juba. And then we have to improve also the police forces. We need to have enough number so that they are able to attending to issues of such kind. And then due to creation of juvenile delinquencies justice court, which is also to be improved so that we are able to try certain particular cases of young one. And then assignment of attorney for juvenile cases also is important. A question can come out that what will be the procedures in knowing that that particular juvenile or that particular child is a criminal or is a nigger? What we do is we have to arrest them. First of all, after when we temporarily put or close or suspend these DJs places that create them, that develop them and make us not also to encourage into some people who are innocent that will be found in those particular DJs places and be taken together with them. So we felt that we have to suspend it temporarily. So that we attack them because we declare war with them, of course. So that we are able to attack them in the places where they are gathering alone. And then from there, we arrest them, we investigate them and then after that, we take them to the court. If it's a young man or young girl, for example, we take them to juvenile delinquency court. And if it is adult, we take that particular group to adult court. This is the procedure that we are seeing that it is like a long term process. The issue of closing after spending this initiative is not going to last so long. After the improvement of our plan, I think it's going to be lifted.
Well, your worship, let's go for a short break and we'll come back to talk more about this issue. The Investors Corner takes a short break. Stay tuned, we'll be back shortly.
There are plenty of investment opportunities in this world's youngest nation of South Sudan. To better understand the economy and explore the thriving market of this country, you ought to get out of your comfort zone. You either hustle under the scorching sun in Konyo Konyo Market, run errands at a small or medium business enterprise or better yet, chair a conglomerate board meeting at a high end tower in Juba while awaiting an official business trip to the region. Whatever you do, just don't rest. Work hard, think big and be smart in order to count all your economic blessings through this weekly business show of the Investors Corner, Exploring Hidden Treasures. Join us every week at this time.
Welcome back. This is the Investors Corner where we explore hidden treasures. With me, Jack Steven Good. And joining me, as you've seen in the first part of this interview, is none other than His Worship, Michael Lado Thomas Alajabu, the Mayor of Juba City Council. Welcome back. Before the break, we were talking about your plans, long term, medium I mean, short term, medium and long plan to improve these vice activities that are, I mean, destroying the future of young generation who are indulging in negative activities. But maybe moving away from that question to another topic of concern in terms of development in Juba City, which is the main topic of our discussion in this episode, is the plans that your institution, Juba City Council, has conducted, perhaps maybe with the private sector. We have seen recently Juba City Council have signed some sort of agreement or a contract with East Africa Go Green Company. I believe a company that is going to work together with Juba City Council in terms of hygiene, cleanliness and serenity. Can you tell us about what you have agreed to be working together with side companies?
Well, we have a number of companies that we agreed and we signed memos of understanding together. One of it is of course the Go Green. I found that this contract is been signed by my president, who, the former mayor, I mean. And then we have also another MOU that we sign with JICA Corporation, which is a Japanese corporation, which is a grant, in fact is a grant for us. Of course, it is been provided to us from my national government in order to support and assist the situation of garbage collection in the city. And then also there is another company which is also a grant. We reach into understanding with them, but we did not sign memos yet. That is the Red Cross associated with other organizations that want also to support us in the issue of garbage collection in the city. Of course, the plan is to see that we in city council, we feel that we are sick, we are ill, we need treatment from the garbage. You see there are a lot of garbage in the areas. The city council cannot be able to enrich in order to reach to all the houses because the situation of the facilities, especially the equipment for collection is limited, we have very few. Of course, everybody knows well that we had been in war for some time and so things become crippled. We in the city, we started so nice and up to this time, I think we would have established ourselves fully. So we are trying with those companies in order to boost, to help us in order to add value. But unfortunately, most of those companies now like Go Green, of course, we signed the contract, they are supposed to start on the 1st of January 2022. But unfortunately, they don't have facilities in place, they don't have equipment. It is of reason that when I summoned them to come to the office in order to question them why they did not started the job. And I found that of course, they did not even cheap or brought the equipment. What we need, they had said, of course, they started bringing the nylons, the bags for collecting the garbage. And then those containers where garbage should be put and it will be collected at any time possible. But there are no compacters, compacters are not there even or even trucks in order to be used for that end. So this is what make us really reluctant because we are sick. We need someone in order to heal us. Because of course, even if you can see our people are bringing the garbage in the middle of the roads because this is where the city council used to concentrate so much and then the markets. We have heaps, big numbers of the garbage is within the markets. So this is what we are, we are really in fact doing. We are like people who are in the middle of the desert who has only one well, where you only take that water and then you just wash your face and the other body take care of itself. We are just like that one. So we need a company that has to rescue us from the situation where we are.
Well, speaking of agreements and MOUs and corporations between city council and companies or international organizations, like you mentioned, you have something with JICA and with Red Cross. We have seen Juba City Council signing very vital documents in the past. Like for example, in 2018, 2019, Juba City Council signed a contract, I believe with one of the local companies to work on elimination or eradication of plastic bags from Juba City and to be replaced with reusable or, you know, materials that are not harmful to the environment. And it was effective for probably couple of month before people forgot, moved on and got back to the plastic bag. And it was effective for probably a couple of months before people forgot, moved on and got back to the plastic bags and bottles being thrown everywhere. What is now the way forward? You come up with very good plans, but after a short while, people forget them and move on?
The issue, you see, the big issue is, you see, signing contract is something simple. Even now, we can sign contract with you right now here, that every now and then you just come and then take information from me or data and all that. But the implementation is the problem. Now, as I say, we Go Green, we signed agreement in November 2021. I was not there, but of course I inherited the responsibility. And they are supposed to start on the 1st of January, as I mentioned. They are not able to start right now because of the reasons I mentioned here. You see, without compacters, without trucks that you have as a company registered and sign a memo of understanding with an institution of government like City Council is a problem. Jika, of course, is going to provide us a grant, which is a long-term, which is not less than 50 years. And we are trying to handle it like an egg. To see that we don't want to show them that we are signing contracts with companies that will not deliver in time for them in order to keep that particular agreement we made with them. So what we have is that we need really to be rescued from the situation we have. Now those companies that have signed, of course, and you mentioned that in 2018, there are some companies that sign agreement with us, of course, in order to support the City Council in collection of... The most, most of the garbage we have, of course, are those plastic bottles. And then we end up in courts. We end up with them in courts. Because when they sign the agreement, they sign, you see, all those companies for the sake of getting money, profit. But when, when they did not get the profit, soon they have to sue City Council to the court.
But when it comes, your worship, when it comes to the issue of plastic bags, we are emulating and following the region. And being part of East African community, we must also, you know, develop our cities in relation to the regional cities. And we have seen regional cities like Nairobi and Kigali already implementing this issue of plastic ban to a higher level. So what is the future of South Sudan in banning this plastic, harmful plastic bag from our environment in general?
Well, plastics are divided into two, there are bags and then there are bottles. We even started as the city authorities, even before I became the mayor, in order to change the plastic into paper bags. And that, that job is started and it went well. But with the problems and then the wars that we have, it can make destabilization of economy and even the system and order that that plan dies. But otherwise, we are going, of course, to revive it to see that it happen. And then the plastic bottles, all over the world, you notice of them. But what is required is that there should be recycling machines that would be used. And we are even working hard now in order also to sign some contracts with some companies that we have already identified in order to have a recycling machines here in Juba, especially of the plastics and then the other garbage, even the medical garbage, so that we are able to deal with them because sometimes they have sharpened kinds of nails and all that that they have. So this is what we are doing. Otherwise, we are conscious about what is supposed to be done in this particular period that we in City Council people expect us, a number of services for us to deliver them. Despite that, we have a mega and mega resources that require really support from all levels of government, from the national and the state.
Yes, we'll try to move as fast as possible to cover many topics because we have a number of them and time would not be on our side later. There is the issue of parking fees, which is in other neighboring cities and all over the world. In Jubasi City, there is no proper way of parking fee structure for motorists in the city. What is the way forward?
The way forward, of course, we have started opening roads. So the opening of roads and then we will be clearing also the encroachment of the roads. You see, the city has some spaces alongside the roads that can be formulated and can be constructed for the parking. We have already started this in the airport, in Juba Airport. And we continue in the markets in order to allocate some areas for parking that it will be well built, well constructed and then interlocked well and then it's loaded into spaces. And then that will be, we have like 12 areas that we already identified from custom up to minister's roads and we also proceed up to Juba and then the airport and then Konyo Konyo and so forth. We have already areas that we designated. And with time, I think our public is going to realize and see it with their own naked eyes.
Yes, and in the process of opening the roads and redesigning the city, you know, most cities would, I mean, would designate the city into levels. Maybe from central business district, which is the main core of the city, to the suburban areas, which is the residential areas and all that. Has Juba City Council planned of restructuring the city in that way?
Well, indeed, we have that, as you can see. You see, when I read you the, my, my plan, priorities, I think we have the project of beautification of the city. So, always in the third world countries or under developing countries, you see that the development is started as the spider net, it is started like that. So actually, we are going to start with Juba. And we also put plan that we want to interlock all sites, you see, alongside from the wall of the, especially the government institution, we have to do it ourselves. Now we are trying to establish the interlock company for just an area where we will be establishing that particular activity in order to see that we have it in place. So the issue of reform, transforming the city, of course, we have already started. If you visit, you see, or you drive alongside the minister's road to the National Parliament roundabout, you can see that we have started this activity of beautification of the city. And we'll continue that and continue up to Mudwea. There are also signs which is going to be done on the roads and even they slot in the middle of the roads where there is no pavement. We'll continue up to the, to the airport and all these areas, we're going to modify them. Because in July, I think Baba of Batikan is going to visit South Sudan. And we need to start earlier as possible and also exploring ways for support from national government and state government and then even other stakeholders like international organizations and see how best they can help us in order to come up with that initiative. We have a plan already in place in order to change the image of Juba. We will start with especially Juba Block Council and then we will move to both Katori and Munki because there are at least several, most of the government installation, the diplomatic missions and all the governments' legs all in Juba Block Council.
Yes, and in terms of, you mentioned also as part of your point of action that you mentioned earlier is demolition of illegal structures on the road and demarcation of areas. Your predecessor was highly accredited for that, maybe for the courage part of it, where some part of the city that maybe most people would have considered as a dangerous place for authorities to go ahead and force demarcation on illegal structures. It was, most people would say he was doing it. But to your office, people are saying that maybe there is a laxity somewhere. Is it something that you can say as to why your new administration has not been taking up with force like your predecessor, who have managed to open even areas that, as I mentioned earlier, were considered as danger areas?
Well, I think in comparison to my former colleague, the mayor, I think maybe I undertaken one of the serious area that he did not even encroach with, which is most dangerous than others, which is the area called Hong Kong. When I came in, you know, Hong Kong in Juba is behind the resident of His Excellency, the President. Whereby everybody is a soldier, there are most of them are those soldiers working in the, in the house of the President and the presidency and all over. So it is a very, very, very dangerous area whereby in a room, in the room, you see that someone has a gun. And even when went there, some of them approach us, you see, want to attack us, but we are able in order to do the job. Courageously, normally, we are able to penetrate. We demolish the structures in the middle of the roads, including the concrete buildings there. And we are able to open roads. At the end of the day, they surrender for us and then they cooperate. At the end of the day, cooperate with us, but at the very beginning, they are so harsh with us. So the issue of opening roads, that is a strategic plan of Jubasi Council since its establishment 2011. But it only fall on each and every mayor who come in, he do and especially if they are given time, they do it. The second area now I'm working in, in Malakia. I opened almost a crossroad, one from Istanbul, when you, it's just stop there in Istanbul and then you look at Eastern Park. You can see now demolition is going on, concrete buildings are being demolished. There are even some structures of storage buildings there. Which is, of course, hard, but it doesn't, it doesn't work or it have nothing to do with the courageousness. But that one is that you have to understand. The issue is not being courageous, the issue is not being just taking things, of course, at the same time using force and all that, no. Our people, our public here, we realize them, doesn't it? When you talk to them slowly, you tell them and you go slowly by slowly. You see, there is no rush in government kind of things. You cannot rush because you cannot complete everything. You cannot change the image of city in one day. As people say, you see, Rome is not being, being in a day, it will take some time, many people die and all that. So we are doing it also for the best of our knowledge. If you visited, if you visit Malakia, you will even wonder that people are happy. The Malakia that have five inches of, five meters, three meters, even a car cannot pass. Now there are roads of 15 meters, 20 meters in Malakia. We did it. There is no fear on that and we are continuing to open a road, you see, from Jam Hotel, from Unives at the airport. We want to debate all, to debate all the transport that Gudelwigs used to, to use to drive behind ministers so that they drive that way through Catholic University, Simoni Jada Bridge, Sub-Malicia, Sub-Libya and then in cross to Antipas Historic Building there, very closer to Lolo Metro Station.
Yes, and in the effort of opening up the roads, which is progressing perhaps positively, there is also a need for opening up or reclaiming the lands that were dedicated for maybe playgrounds or recreation centers or maybe parks within the city. As maybe authorities and housing would say that in the demarcation of Jubasi City, there are located areas for these structures, but today you don't find them. Is it a plan of action for Jubasi City?
It is in a plan, but of course it's a tough job. It is a tough job that need to be taken because you see that those people living there, some of them have concrete structures, some of them have just temporary structures and some of them claiming they don't have any places to go, some of them are claiming to be widows and all that. But for me, I'm taking things, you see, slowly by slowly. I give time, enough time. Even if they need two months or even one month or even three months, especially for, for the heavy structures like the historic buildings. If they requested that and they are really doing it, implementing, I don't have problem. But once that, that particular period elapsed, I just go and then I do my job. You see, without showing, without boosting, without doing what, no. I'm a simple person and I studied sociology and social anthropology. I know, sometimes, you see, I can understand situation. Like during Christmas, I have to uphold the demolition of the encroaches, what you call the structures of the road. I have to stop it from Christmas time up to 15th of January, where I launched it again in Hong Kong. Whereby I opened the road, I graded it, I have to show the pavement of the road, you were able to use it immediately. This is what I'm doing. I don't make the demolition on the road and then leave the road just like that, like a compound, no. I have to make grading so that people really know when that this place is being opened, where it been demolished because something good is going to come. One day when I come, people are just, you see, people are just laughing. Then thank you very much, you have done something good.
And your worship, now because of time and as we wind up, we have heard about revenue collection and taxation, which is aimed at improving the business and investment in Jubasi City. Now, what would be your final word and also an encouragement to these business communities who sometimes feel frustrated by a lot of levy tax and a lot of visitation from revenue collection authorities? To give them hope that the best is to come?
Well, thank you very much. I would like just to tell them that I'm here for them, for providing them services and also I'm conscious of their urban development. And that is why when I was three days in the office, I was able to call the business people, the investors for a meeting and I continue to have a continuous meeting with a big number of traders, which is almost 150. So that is a creation of harmony between me and them, friendship and all that. And now they are happy. Now there is no any more row so much in the, in the markets, even if that people are not always satisfactory of any services provided. But I'm working hard in order to see that we create a conscious environment for them and that is why even opening of roads is one of the development for the investors. Because once they see that there is good at road, they install business in that particular road. Recently here in Malakia, where I was mentioning, already they started to, 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 to sign memorandum of understanding for lease, for leasing the houses from there after when they see the roads are so wide. So one of the thing is also that let them not bring us, you see, the illicit kind of products that affects our, our, our generation and our people, especially the expired goods and then the alcohol and all that because also I include them in my local orders, you see. I restrict it because it's a city of process, what you have mentioned, that reflect other cities in the world and in the region. So we need to have alcohol, but restricting them to be used in, in the specific places, in the hotels, in the bars, in the wholesale places for the, for, for the alcohol and then in the guesthouse and also in the big restaurants. But in those shops that are selling food commodities in the areas, no. That is what restriction I'm going to, to, to have. And we started yesterday even reinforce to implement it. We arrested a number of that. Even people are selling that particular alcohol or the spirits in the, in the houses, which is called gin. What Royal Gin is, that gin, gin afar, short as career and all that, which is destroying our, our generation. And we launched it yesterday. We are able even to arrest people with opiums, you see, marungi and all that. And we arrested yesterday even niggers here in Malakia. So we are telling them in order to bring us good products. We are, of course, continue to be flexible with them because we don't have product. We don't have product in the, in the, in the country, that's why we are depending on them. So we used to be flexible with them until the time that we are in a total peace and we're able to produce for ourselves and then we will see now even the regulation of prices and all that will be done. So we need cooperation from them and let them know that City Council has a right in order to collect taxes, revenues and all that in order to be, to be, to be returned to them in the form of, of services that they need. The cleaning of the markets, the cleaning of the city, the whole, opening for them roads, improving the roads, turmericing them, maraming them, you see, and all that. This is what we are doing. This is of course to show the, the image of the city so that it is attractive to the investors, attractive to everybody who is wanting to visit South Sudan for tourist or for other reasons maybe. And this is what we are really doing and we're serious on that. We just need support from them. And even I'm engaging some of them, especially the hotels managers. The road of, I want to take that one as a model, the one, the stadium, Juba Stadium there. There are a number of big hotels coming up there. I have to tell them, now I'm going to have a meeting with them in order to appeal, you see, to negotiate with them to see that they improve that road. They improve it, putting good lighting, security lights on the road and then also improving the tarmac. And then we'll continue even up to, up to the Grevia in Haimalakal. So that we raise that wall together because we, as the city, we, we started half of it. In order to raise it up and then it would be, make of course well so that it reflects that road because that roads that are leading people, especially the Guinness tariffs that will be coming from outside, will be visiting that place from time to time. It is a get in and get out so that we have it, of course, improve that fence to be raised so that it good, it show a good image of that particular roads. And we will continue doing that as a social cooperative responsibility with all institutions with, which are with us in the, in the city, as stakeholders to, to, to develop.
Well, your worship, we may have a lot of things to talk about, but because of time factor and all of that, perhaps we would like to leave it there and hopefully get another time in the near future to exhaust them and find a way of improving our city together. And that is it, your worship, Michael Thomas LaDu Alajabo, the mayor of Jubasi Council, for talking to SSBC and writing to us your plan for improving the city. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. And this brings us to the end of our...